There beats a reminder in the heart of every There beats a reminder in the heart of every home that communities grow one neighbor at a time. And when neighbors come together to take care of each other, communities grow resilient.
Rich, Rich.
Rich, Rich. There we go. Thank you, Rich. The meeting will begin in one minute.
There we are.
Jim, did you get that paper?
I think I put it up there, didn't I? At your desk.
Good afternoon. Welcome to Carnegie for our city council informational meeting. Today's date is Tuesday, October 7th. Welcome to all those in attendance and anybody that may be watching online or on CityLink. Thank you for your interest. We have a rather full agenda today. It's going to be, I think, fairly lengthy, but before we begin that, we always begin with city council open discussion. Counselor Kylie.
Just very quickly, I know a number of us have had discussions in the past week regarding commercial building permits and the amount of time that it's taking right now to secure them. So I would hope that in the very near future, we could get somebody from the city department responsible to report back to us on that particular issue.
Okay. Thanks for opening the door. You're one of the few counselors that I have not had the chance to give a phone call to, but I am working on a revision to our city ordinances regarding building permits, specifically those for private residences and the requirement for a building permit to simply, in my mind, maintenance to a home requiring shingles. Typically here, we have 2,100. This year, we'll probably exceed 6,000. The workflow jam, the paperwork jam, kind of inhibiting the way we do business down there, but also, in my thought, is the requirement for a building permit to reshingle your home should not be necessary, and that may alleviate some of that problem. So I have emailed each one of you talking points as to why I am going to be proposing this change to our ordinance. I have also contacted the Home Builders Association, talked to several contractors, and so on and so forth. I plan on bringing a first reading of this to next week, next week Tuesday, city council meeting. Second reading to be on November 4th, I believe. I'm putting a lot of time in between there simply because I am looking for input and feedback from both contractors and people of the community to see what their feelings are on the subject. So you'll be seeing the revision here pretty soon, but I just provided you with a list of my talking points by email here recently. Counselor Kylie.
The contractor that we spoke with last week had stated that it wasn't necessarily residential permits that were affected in the delay, that it was primarily the commercial permits. So I guess I would be interested in hearing from the city regarding that.
Okay. We will have somebody from Building Services then probably address that issue. Next week's informational committee meeting, if you don't mind, or not committee, but informational meeting. Why the logjam. I heard the same thing about a 12-week delay on getting a building permit for a commercial building. I don't know if residential and how the two work together, but we'll see if we can make it work better, I guess, so.
Look to your left.
We, Rick and I, Counselor, Rick and I have had the same conversation with the contractor in regards to the 12-week review. I did follow up with planning. That is not going to take 12 weeks. During that conversation, I was also told that the commercial and residential don't necessarily go hand in hand. And just because we've had a high increase in the roofing permits doesn't necessarily mean that's going to hold up any other, any other building permits at that time. The other thing that was brought up, that, that person that talked to us is, that is moving along. They are trying to come up with solutions to make sure that we are not delaying 12 weeks because it's just not acceptable. I have been reached out by a handful of contractors that are very concerned with getting rid of the building permit for roofing. I haven't been able to call each one of them back, but there were some concerns in the protections that take place of fly-by-night construction companies that might just be flying in from out of state when we have huge hailstorms or windstorms without having them to get the proper permitting. It's kind of one more checks and balance for some of that. I did bring up, what about not having a building permit for my house? If I want to do it myself, why do I need a building permit? And there was some pushback from that as well with the conversations I've had. So I would encourage maybe having planning come in front of us and explaining the process, explaining why it is good, and we can make that decision if that's something that we want to get rid of as well. But like I said, I have been reached out by many contractors that are not overly crazy about getting rid of that, and I was told they don't go hand in hand. So I like the delay a little bit so we can get more information.
And more, yes. More information will be forthcoming. It's not something that's going to be pushed through. It'll be a good month before we have any decisions that are made on it. So I plan on a good discussion, like I said, even tomorrow, I'll be traveling, but doing a teleconference with the Home Builders Association, and Ron Bell will be present at that meeting too because they have questions. So, yes, there will be a lot of discussion on this issue. So on that issue, any other questions or concerns? Counselor Stagers.
Yes, talking about information, there have been a number of people asking me about, when are we going to find out some more information about the event center? More specifically about the, you know, experimental sighting they were going to put on. It was going to be done this week of September 8th, and of course, it has not been done. But can we just get more inform, have somebody come before the city council and answer that question? And also maybe some other questions we might have with the event center.
Okay, we can request probably somebody from legal or the mayor's staff on that to tell us where they are in the process. We'll have that at next week's informational meeting. Is that okay?
And then also too, I got a phone call from a constituent who saw the article in the Argus Leader about the city owning a $1,200 drone, and they've expressed concern already about the issue of privacy and the rules, how the drone will be operated. Now, of course, there are going to be federal regulations, but also with our city drone, we ought to be able to also have some kind of rules dealing with how it's going to be used too. So people are concerned about their privacy.
I heard they were just going to use it in your neighborhood, so no problem here.
I think we ought to have an ordinance right away about this drone. But it's something I think we should start thinking about. I mean, obviously.
And I'm sure that's why the FAA has delayed any decision on what they are going to be doing with allowing drones to be used commercially or by government.
But also, we should also think about, you know, to what extent are we going to have drones involved in code enforcement and things like that? I don't know the answer to that, but I think we should start thinking about it.
I'm sure it'll be brought back up, Counselor. I'm sure it will be brought back.
Okay, I'll bring it up again. Okay.
So right now, we know it's grounded, so for right now, I think we're okay, so.
Well, let's keep it grounded then, till we come up with something really, the best thing.
Other public input or open discussion, I'm sorry. I had one other thing, and that's the Counselor, Eric Urbanbach and I, I had to separate you too, so too close. Counselor Urbanbach and I attended the Cathedral Heights Neighborhood Association meeting on September 25th. There had to be 40, 50 people in attendance. Just a kind of a shout out to that neighborhood. They do a great job of, you know, watching and knowing what's happening in their neighborhood. They are a neighborhood. They know each other. Everybody knows everybody, and it's just great to see. And I'd encourage anybody that's considering a neighborhood association, contact the city, the police department. There are advocates for getting that done properly. And just a great way to keep our city, the great city that we know it to be, so. All righty, presentations. We're going to start with our Vehicle for Hire ordinance. Jim David has some cleanup language for that. Bill, ordinance.
Good afternoon, Jim David, city council staff. The Vehicle for Hire ordinance, which regulates taxicabs, buses, limousines, and others, went through considerable revisions by council in April of 2014. This followed more than 14 months of review and study by the Public Services Committee. Some example of the ordinance changes include required certified mechanic inspections, elimination of the fuel surcharge, consumer protections. Business and driver background checks were also enhanced. These became effective October 1st, but there are three changes that are currently being recommended. The first change involves repealing the required taxi meter inspections and seal. This summer, the city issued an RFP for inspection services, but received only one proposal for $90 for each taxi meter inspected. Due to the higher-than-expected cost, the city council declined the inspection contract last month. Language allowing for random or complaint-based inspections will remain in place. The second change corrects an error in how taxi fares are calculated. In 2007, the council passed two ordinances that increased fares in Sioux Falls. The increases were done through the actual fare amount and the fraction used to calculate the per-mile fare. Unfortunately, the ordinance changed the initial mile fraction from 1/9 to 1/10, but left the each succeeding fraction in place at 1/9. Taxis were able to make the fraction error work by not charging the maximum, but with the elimination of the fuel surcharge, some are planning on charging the maximum fare that's allowed under ordinance. But when they do this, they're having difficulties calculating this in their, in their taxi meters by having those two fractions. To keep the fare as close to revenue neutral as possible, this proposal reduces the fraction from 1/10 to 1/9, but increases the drop charge from 260 to 295. There would be no changes to the first or succeeding mile fare, but those traveling less than one mile may see a .35 increase. The third and final change involves the state-issued carrier license, which allows alcohol aboard taxicabs, buses, limousines, and other vehicles for hire. Earlier this year, the legislature passed a law allowing local restrictions to this license. This proposal also originated in the council's 2014 pile of legislative priorities. The local restrictions include a requirement that the driver and the server must be 21 years of age. Alcohol may not be accessible to the driver while he is seated in the driver's seat, and a security management plan is required. Happy to answer any of your questions.
Questions for Jim? Counselor Urbanbach.
Jim, remind us what a security management plan is. What does that mean?
Sure, the, a security management plan is required for those businesses that serve alcohol when they first open up, or if they've had a, if they've failed a sting. What this would allow for, or what it provides a business is, how do you card an individual? How do you deal with somebody that's unruly, that may be overly intoxicated? It just provides that additional assistance to those businesses that decide to serve alcohol. Right now, if I am a carrier licensee in the city's Sioux Falls, I do not need to have a security management plan.
And then would this also provide for those stings to happen with, with?
That would be up to the administration whether or not they decide to do those stings.
That's not something that we set by policy. That really isn't administrative function. Good. Thank you.
Counselor Roffin.
I have a couple of questions. The, I had one earlier here, and I wanted, oh, the taxi meter. How often, how then are we going to inspect those if we're not going to be doing it on a, what, every, whenever those changes were made that we talked about with new tires and all that kind of stuff?
Yeah, it would actually be complaint or random based, and I had talked to the police chief during the discussion on the contract, and the police department was interested in doing random or complaint-based checks, and the thought process is if they do some of these checks, it might cause some self-regulation within the industry that they're going to make sure that their taxi meters are accurate. Right now, in the ordinance, even with this change, they still have to be accurate. And if they're not, then they're out of commission, so.
And I know that, if I may, the second one, the, we talked about this during the hearings, if you will, this going from 1/10 of a mile to start out then to 1/9. Would this be a convenient time to just change that, to leave everything at 1/9 or 1/10?
Well, you know, we looked at, early when this process was going through the Public Services Committee, we looked at this at that time, and we, the goal was to make it revenue neutral. The committee had, didn't want to change the rates or adjust the rates at that time. And so we tried to figure out a way to make it revenue neutral. Just looking through it recently, we're able to figure out that if you change the fraction from both being 1/9, you don't increase or decrease the fare. Basically, you're taking, you know, an extra .35 at the front end on the drop charge, and then you're eliminating the one fraction, so you're keeping everything the same. I visited with at least one taxicab company. They were satisfied with this change. They're the ones that originally brought this to us, saying that their taxi meters would not work with two separate fractions.
So we're going to stay with 1/9 all the way through then?
Yep, 1/9.
Not, not divide, okay, good. That was my concern, that we don't go from 1/10 then back to 1/9 and whatever, and so by doing it that way, it'll work.
And looking back since 1980, the fractions have changed. They were 1/4, 1/5, 1/6, 1/8. In 2000, it was changed from 1/8 to 1/9, and then in 2007, it was 1/9 to 1/10, except for subsection 2.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Jim. Our next presentation is by city clerk Denise Tucker. At a convention, our conference she attended, or academy she attended. Denise, please.
Well, thank you for the promotion, Council Chair. Denise Tucker, Assistant City Clerk.
Anything I can do?
All right, as, as Council Chair said, my name is Denise Tucker, and I am an Assistant City Clerk, and I'm here to thank you guys and City Clerk Lori Hogstedt for the opportunity to go in September to the Minnesota Clerks and Finance Officer Association Advanced Academy. It was in Rochester, Minnesota, and this was a chance for me to earn points towards my Master Municipal Clerk's designation. Now, some of you may be wondering what the MMC designation is and why I went to Now, some of you may be wondering what the MMC designation is and why I went to Minnesota for school, but you're going to have to wait. You got to have a little suspense in this presentation, so I'll get back to that. The Advanced Academy was set up in three four-hour sessions. They were Citizen Engagement, The Story of Brooklyn Park, Minnesota; Facilitating for a Purpose, Building Consensus Across Departments and Political Boundaries; Yield Cities Unlimited, Story of Brooklyn Park, Minnesota; and Coon Rapids, Minnesota. And you can't tweet that, How to Be Ethical in the Public Sector. I know they sound all very interesting, but in lieu of time, I'm only going to speak on one session that interested me the most, and that was Session One. Citizen Engagement, The Story of Brooklyn Park, Minnesota. This session focused on the city of Brooklyn Park and what they have done to embrace diversity. One of the instructors quoted a statement from an August 14th, 2008 New York Times article, which stated, "A U.S. Census Bureau projection that non-whites in the U.S. are set to become majority by 2042." Brooklyn Park has already reached this milestone. Brooklyn Park is currently 50% minority, the basis being Southeast Asian, African, and Latino. In fact, outside of Liberia, Brooklyn Park has the most Liberians at more than 8,000. Discussion centered on things Brooklyn Park has done to promote diversity and better understanding. A couple of things they have done include having their code enforcement videos subtitled in Spanish and Mung, a community yard sale, they have a Brooklyn Park May Day where you're encouraged during the month of May to get out and meet your neighbors. Also, they have a youth and government day and a diversity day. Not only are they getting the community involved, but this also includes youth and businesses. Another focus that they have is on police and community relations, and this was something that I thought was really neat. What they do is they have the male police officers compete against some of the Liberian men in soccer. So this is a more relaxed way to get to know one another and to, you know, form a little camaraderie. And they do the same with women, except for it's with kickball. Now, one of the officers who had attended was later called to a dispute in a neighborhood, and when he got there, he recognized one of the gentlemen from the soccer game. And because of this encounter earlier in the day, he was able to go in with more of an open mind and more of a cultural understanding than, you know, being closed off because he didn't understand and, you know, he's a little, I'll take a leap and say afraid of what he was going to encounter, but, you know, his mind was open. They aren't, Brooklyn Park isn't solely thinking about racial diversity, they're also looking at generational diversity and not economic diversity. And you can see this in salaries, housing, rentals, and jobs. It would, they have this street, and I apologize for not remembering the name of it, but if you live north of that major street, you're considered more wealthy, the house, you're making better money, you're living in better homes, versus south of that street, where there's going to be more rentals and more unemployment and less earnings. And so, in fact, it's common denominator when people are saying, hey, I'm going to meet you at my house, well, where do you live? You know, so they kind of have, they're prepared on what they might find if you're north or south of this street. Something that I also thought was pretty neat, that they're beginning to think outside the box in terms of something as simple as holidays. Not everybody is Christian, so to speak, and so when you're looking at all these other diverse religions, you know, why do I have to take your holidays? Why can't I take mine? So this is something that they're starting to look into and to consider. These sessions, well, this particular session made me think of Sioux Falls and what is being done to promote diversity education inclusion here. We have things such as the Festival of Cultures, St. Patrick's Day Parade, German Fest, Irish Fest, the Multicultural Center of Sioux Falls, the Human Relations Commission, Rosa Parks Elementary School, and much more. In fact, I found these brochures in our multipurpose room. One is for Sioux Area Metro, which is written in both English and I believe Spanish. And then there's other brochures, which are in different languages that I'm not even going to begin to take a guess at. So, we are making some strides here. But maybe there's a little bit more that the city can do, such as have our code enforcement videos subtitled. I know there's, there would be additional costs, but the difference in having residents have a better understanding would make them feel more part of the city. Sioux Falls is more diverse than people may realize. I always find it interesting when people are proud to talk about their heritage, oh, I'm German, or I'm Dutch, or I'm Spanish, or whatever, and how their grandparents came, or great-grandparents came and couldn't speak English, or they only spoke their native language in their home, and yet they get frustrated when there are immigrants and refugees who cannot speak English. It's kind of a cultural double standard, in my opinion. According to Chrissy Nicoliasen, the Executive Director of the Multicultural Center of Sioux Falls, there are currently 142 different languages being spoken in Sioux Falls. The 2010 U.S. Census showed that minorities make up 15.7% of the Sioux Falls population. The largest group is Hispanic or Latino, which is comprised of 4.4%. In terms of age diversity, 43.5% of the population is made up of persons under five, persons under eighteen, and persons 65 and older. And for women, it was 50.4%. Again, I found all three sessions interesting, and again, I appreciate the opportunity to have been one of approximately 30 people to attend this academy. Just so you know, why I went to Minnesota is that South Dakota doesn't offer educational opportunities for people who are seeking to achieve their Certified Municipal Clerk's designation or their Master Municipal Clerk's designation. For the MMC, you must earn 100 points, which is 60 points for advanced education, and 40 points for professional and social contributions. I recently spoke with Yvonne Taylor with the South Dakota Municipal League about educational opportunities, and this is something that's going to be looked into. Just so you know, obtaining the MMC designation is not a job requirement, it's not a criteria that needs to be done to receive a raise by the city. I personally believe in continuing education and being the best employee, Assistant City Clerk that I can be for this city. My reason for pursuing the MMC designation is for personal and professional pride, and again, I thank you for your time and the opportunities that you have provided with me to continue my education. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Denise. Any questions for our Assistant City Clerk, Ms. Tucker? Counselor Erpenbach.
Just one question, Denise. First of all, congratulations and thanks for sticking with this. I know how important it is to you. How far away from that MMC are you at this point? What, do you have a timeline for that?
For me personally, it's going to take a while. I am roughly at 20 for educational and roughly at 10 for social. Things like attending the International Municipal Clerk's Institute makes a difference in terms of obtaining points. There are FEMA classes that I'm taking online when the opportunity arises. They're kind of one point apiece. It's when you have time, and, you know, Minnesota is lucky in the sense that they have a state association, and they have this Advanced Academy, and they have regional conferences. And one of the things that I had even thought about too, and I believe I'd mentioned to you and to Lori, was having a Region Eight Conference in Sioux Falls, which would bring several states for the IIMC, the International Institute of Municipal Clerks, and were comprised of several, Wyoming and New Mexico and just hope about eight states. And to bring them here and to hold something like what I went to, a weekend academy, and where you can earn more education points, and that would help to bring also, there are 18 members, I believe, of the IIMC in South Dakota. There are five people with their CMCs in the state, and at the time of my reporting, there were no MMCs when I received this information at that particular time. So there are opportunities out there, which I think would be great for the city and great to meet other people in the same profession. And, you know, when I went to Minnesota, I told them, I'm hard-pressed to name another city clerk in this state. There, we are a unique profession, there are a lot of finance officers, treasurers, different people who do what we do, but to actually be considered a city clerk, those are far and few between.
Good, thank you.
Other questions? Very good, Denise, thank you.
Again, thank you for your time.
Our next presentation will be from Jeff Schmidt, our Chief Planning Official, and this will be on Shape Sioux Falls, commonly confused with Shape Places by myself, I guess.
Thank you, appreciate it. Jeff Schmidt from the City Planning Office and Zoning Office. Since Denise gave that a little bit overview, I'm going to throw a soundbite in here before I get started. I've given a similar presentation like this multiple times over the last year. This one started out to the South Dakota Association of Certified Professional Engineers last April, I think. They had their net South Dakota Conference down at the Holiday Inn, which is where I got this title. I didn't come up with this title just for this group. And then, Community Connections, which is the city's group that educates our community, I gave a similar presentation to that recently. I have a presentation tomorrow night to ASHRAE, which I think is the Mechanical Engineers. I speak frequently to the Lifelong Learning Group, Retired Citizens and Bus Tours, where I'm trying to get this point across about how Sioux Falls plans for the growth and development of Sioux Falls, which is what Denise was just talking about, is how do you get out and explain things to the community? So, anyways, the first title really talks about not just any house or commercial development, it's just are you planning for that thing that's coming forward to your neighborhood? So, again, planning is what people try to do. Everyone tries to plan, but very few plans come to fruition, okay? So when we plan, right now, we're looking to the year 2035, and we're looking out there, we're looking at locations and impacts, and when we do this, before the first shovel gets turned and gets started, you really need to look into the future. So, again, when the public thinks about this, what I try to raise to them, which is the same question I raised to you, is how many of you are planning on a vacation or retiring? That's what planning is. It's not, so, it's absolutely going to happen on Tuesday at 5:00. It's what are you planning on doing? And people have to think about that from the very beginning. Yeah, well, it might change, or it might, right, that's what the plans are. It's not absolute. Okay? So, Shape Sioux Falls, 2035, is the plan for the city of Sioux Falls when we get to 2035. Our guiding tools for the city of Sioux Falls really fall under these four caveats. Okay, the comprehensive plan, which we've had about four throughout the city of Sioux Falls, and the citizens never understood comprehensive planning, so we entitled it Shape Sioux Falls, the whole encompassing Sioux Falls. The subdivision ordinance, which looks at how you subdivide land in Sioux Falls, and then the zoning ordinance, which again, people don't understand zoning, but we call it, how do you shape your place? Yeah, I want to talk about my house. Well, that's not Sioux Falls, this is the place. So that's Shape Places. And then you get down to, after you go through those three steps, well, now let's talk about engineering design standards. Let's talk about shingling our roof. Let's talk about putting in a water pipe. That's not the comprehensive plan, that's, so you have to go through these four steps before you can do that final standard. So, today I'm talking about Shape Sioux Falls. There's 10 chapters in this all-encompassing document that was adopted by city council back in 2009, and today I'm going to try to get through five chapters in 10 minutes. So, again, Chapter One is the goals, Chapter Two is the growth, Three is how we do neighborhoods, the arrangement of how neighborhoods get laid out. Chapter Four is how they're transitioned, how we buffer these areas. And then Chapter Five was Shape Places. In the comprehensive plan, we started looking at what creates these very beautiful, great places. So, the first part, shaping communities, when we did the goals and objectives, there's an appendix in here that talks about, for two years, we did community involvement, and we asked people, what do they want? And they told us, and that's all part of this document, the two-year analysis before we put together the plan. Our guiding goals, I think everybody understands them, they appreciate them, they go, we're going to effectively manage growth, a full range of services available to the entire community. Our goal is to plan neighborhoods, land use, and urban form for all residents, not for a few, not for me, but for the entire community, regardless of income. And we're going to improve the sustainability of the community. Those are the three goals of this comprehensive plan. Our community trends, again, are right up at the very beginning, we're growing. Okay, if that's not obvious to anybody, all right? And it's a fantastically consistent growth. I can give you the numbers ad nauseam, but look, population, 24%, 23%, 24%. We grow by 24%, not by 100%, not by negative 2%. We're growing at a consistent rate. So when people talk about sprawl or bad, that's not what we do in Sioux Falls. So, we have those things in here. Now you look at growth. Again, this is really what sets the trend on how well-prepared we are. We look at city utilities and being there on a timely basis to make sure the growth goes forward. So we look at how much land we're plating, how much land is being consumed, and making sure that we're growing efficiently. On the left-hand side, if you just zero in in two numbers, over the last 12 years, our average has been 883 acres of platted land, and our median is 878 acres. We're doing 880 acres. So throughout the high and low, it's just amazing how efficient our growth is in Sioux Falls. So we take 880 acres a year. I project that out and say, okay, over 28 years, we're going to have to have 32,000 acres of land, and then that's my demand, but I don't want to just leave my demand, it's the same thing of how much money I want, but how much money I really want. So then you go, how about we have 36,000 acres of supply? We explain what those little caveats are, and here's our growth plan. 36,000 acres of land over the next 30 years, and then everybody can sit down and go, okay, so it is a well-planned community. You have to be able to back out and look at, how'd you come up with this map? If people don't just look at the map, they needed to understand backwards, well, that's 800 acres a year over 28 years with a little bit of extra on it, but that's where we came up with this map to say, this is how big our community is going to be in the year 2035. This is 36,000 additional acres. And then you can look at the tiers and what's currently been developed and what needs to be developed, and then you go, yeah, but how are you going to do that, Jeff? How are you going to grow and manage our growth, and at what time? All of these maps are based upon the CIP that you see every year. We look at, in that five-year CIP, that shows your five years expenditures in Tier One, and then we look out again and plan for what about the next tier of growth? From six to 15, and what about 16 to 25 years? And then we show where we need to put in water and roads. Yeah, but when do you need to put in fire stations and schools and parks? What ones are in the CIP and you've budgeted for, those show up as blue, and so then again, you can look at the maps and absolutely see how they fall in the growth and development of Sioux Falls. That's all, again, just in the first two chapters. So then you get to Shape Neighborhoods. This is really looking at the intensities and the impacts of our land uses. How I try to explain that again is, we didn't make this up, it's based upon traffic impacts and traffic studies. Okay, we work diligently with our engineering department to determine this. So, in a couple of different graphics and exhibits, this becomes a lot clearer. When you look at an intersection, such as these two, one's a community on my left, subregional on the other, where those access points are will determine how big your intersection is. Again, let's point to the left-hand side. If your intersection's at 660, then you're going to have 10 acres in that corner, and so 10 acres by 10 acres in all four corners, you're going to have a 40-acre 10 acres by 10 acres in all four corners, you're gonna have a 40-acre in corner. If it's a subregional, your access points are gonna be at a quarter-mile. And a quarter-mile gives you a 40-acre corner, and you have four 40-acre corners, all of a sudden, it becomes a subregional. Well, that's based upon how much traffic's at this intersection, where the traffic signals are gonna be set, and where the traffic flow is. We all know from living in Sioux Falls and going to other communities, what you don't want is the traffic to come out to and then drive through the residential neighborhood to get back to the commercial development. So it's common sense, it just makes sense. Well, if they get up to the traffic signal, what's back towards that intersection, that red is gonna be the commercial development. That's how big it's gonna be. So we know this, this is how big the intersection's gonna be, then we go and put it on the land use map. And we go, "It's pretty simple." When I do junior achievement, kids get this, they go, "Jeff, the big red's gonna be big." And I go, "Yep." And they're gonna go, "I guess it's gonna serve the region." And I say, "Yes, it is." They go, "But then I guess that little tiny one's just gonna serve my neighborhood." And I go, "Yes, it is." It's so self-explanatory. And they go, "I wonder how he came up with that." Well, go back to the previous one, they, well, if the neighborhood is based on a really small intersection, because the traffic signals are spaced that way, but if it's a really big intersection, I didn't come to this map and go, "I think I just wanna make it really big." It's based upon where the traffic signals were. It was an engineering analysis that we looked at, plus where water was gonna be, where sewer capacity was gonna be. And this is the same map you saw, but we needed 36,000 acres, and we know exactly how big the intersections are gonna be, and where they're gonna be. So again, you start to look at this, which is what people tend to look at and understand, and then you go and you look at it and go, "Well, if it is a subregional, what does that mean?" Again, it just keeps getting narrower and narrower. A subregional is 160 to 320 acres, and no more than 50% is gonna be commercial. This is all spelled out back in 2009, and you're gonna have a commercial 3 or a commercial 4, but you could also have some supporting districts of a general office or multifamily. So people would know, well, what's gonna be in a subregional district? Then, once they start to understand what the land uses are, you get to transitions. For some of the council members that have been around a long time, or have more experience, when we did zoning districts before, we would stand up in front of you and say, "This area's gonna be zoned from Ag to C2 or for R," and there was no criteria, there were no standards to, "So do you think this is a good idea or not?" Back in 2009, we came up with a compatibility chart. And the compatibility chart, like it or not, is fantastic, 'cause people understand now. Okay? Red is bad, green is good. Okay? It's right here, it explains it. Every time we present now, we say, "Look, heavy industrial is a 1 next to single family." That's just common sense. If it's heavy industrial next to single family, it comes in as a 1. Well, what about if we have heavy industrial next to heavy industrial? That's a 5. It's perfect sense to have those, "Yeah, well, what about those gray, what about those purple ones?" Well, those are 3s, and if with more buffering, with more landscaping, it can work. It's not a 1, it's not a 5. And we came up, again, back with the zoning or the comprehensive plan in 2009, we explained so that citizens, stakeholders, decision-makers can look at this and go, "I already have some criteria to make a decision on whether or not this is appropriate in this neighborhood." And this was all, again, all explained back in the comprehensive plan. And lastly, for today, unless you need more information, we then asked the citizens to complete a survey and help us to decide what they wanted to see in the future, in the next 30 years. What did the citizens wanna see for streetscapes, for signage, for open space, for transitions? And they told us what they wanted in this comprehensive plan. We detailed it, and then we created our zoning ordinance. So, there's five other chapters to go through, but that really sets the tone for what we tried to do. And then we took this comprehensive plan, and we adopted a zoning ordinance called Shape Places. So, with that, I'll open it up to really what you guys have an interest in, and any questions or concerns.
Counselors, Counselor Staggers.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Jeff, I'm really interested in the drone. Is that under your department's control?
The what?
The drone.
No.
Okay. Are you planning to use that probably to survey the city and things like this?
No.
Or, no?
No.
It seemed like it would make sense to do that.
Nope. Not interested in using a drone.
Not interested, okay.
No.
Okay.
Other questions regarding Shape Sioux Falls, Shape Places?
I can just, you know, I've looked at it, I've studied it, and it's easy once you use it. And I think that's the key, like anything else in our businesses, et cetera, like using Outlook or something. You use it four, five, six times, and pretty soon, it starts to make sense. And it just about made good sense to me the last time I really looked at it hard. And so I know it will work, and it's a good plan. But the point is too, that it doesn't necessarily take all of the decisions away from you. They're still gonna come here, a lot of them. And so there are ways to amend, if you will, or do things as we go, as we're finding now. And so, I commend the department and the people who put the work in on this, because it is a comprehensive and an easy way. And the thing that I'm hearing from contractors out there is that they may not like it a lot at times, different things, because they used to be able to just kinda do what they wanted.
Right.
But they are getting so that they understand it, now that when they bring designs here, they will, they know.
What the rules are.
Not to bring it, because it's just not gonna fly.
Correct.
Counselor Urpenbach.
I guess I was just gonna kinda dovetail on that. That's exactly what I'm hearing as well. The consistency is huge, and it's huge not only for contractors, but for people in neighborhoods, that they know what it's gonna be. And if it's going to change, it becomes a zoning change, which is a huge deal, and that changes how we see, you know, how we perceive how our community's gonna grow. I just, I want you to keep doing these low-level conversations with us and with other people too, because the reminders really help, but it is, it's a great plan.
Yeah.
We have that conversation often about property rights and property values, and people often come to us and they say, "Well, when I bought my house, that wasn't the plan for this neighborhood." And while we understand that, because we're property owners too, we know that plans are subject to change, and that by having this broad plan that we call Shape Sioux Falls, we know that it can change, but it can only change within certain parameters. And as a counselor, that's what I like and appreciate, so, thank you. Thank you very much, Jeff.
Thank you.
Marshall Lanier, welcome. Fire Marshal Lanier, and talk to us about Growing Resilient and our Hayward Neighborhood Program.
Afternoon, Council. Dean Lanier, Fire Marshal of Sioux Falls Fire Rescue. First, starting off by wishing you a happy Fire Prevention Week. I just gotta get that one in there. It's fortunate to come behind the gentleman that gets to talk about community growth. Often, in the opportunities I get to stand before you, what we do in fire definitely contributes to community growth. A high fire loss in our community doesn't exactly sponsor a whole lot of community growth around our town. So, I'm happy to be here and share with you what we're doing in one single day of fire prevention that has moved around the city of Sioux Falls over the last year. Last year, I was approached with an opportunity and had the opportunity to sit down and collaborate with several personnel from Health Department and American Red Cross and Living Well, and talk to them about what we're doing community-wide in serving our public with a good safety message and preparedness. That discussion and opportunity grew into a pilot project last year, where we went into Whittier Neighborhood and canvassed more than 1,800 homes. I can tell you, 1,800 homes is not a project that Sioux Falls Fire Rescue can do by itself. It just will not happen if we don't have collaborative contributions from both public and private sector. It just does not happen without some collaboration, and it really needs both public and private collaboration to make it happen. I will show you a short PSA that we put together for this year's Growing Resilient campaign, and then I'll turn it over to Tony Burke, the Executive Chapter of American Red Cross for the Dakota Region.
There beats a reminder in the heart of every home that communities grow one neighbor at a time. And when neighbors come together to take care of each other, communities grow resilient. Volunteers with Growing Resilient Sioux Falls will be in the Hayward Neighborhood October 11, providing smoke alarms, offering blood pressure checks, and education to build a stronger, more resilient Sioux Falls. For more information or to volunteer, contact your local Red Cross office or go to redcross.org.
Thanks, Marshall Lanier. Council Chair, Counselors, Staff, I appreciate the opportunity to stand before you today. As Dean said, I'm Tony Burke, I'm the Executive Director for the Eastern South Dakota Chapter of the American Red Cross. Very pleased to see what we're doing, and a little background on myself, I come out of the fire service, retired firefighter, so can speak passionately to this cause and this issue. Joined the American Red Cross just over two years ago, and really pleased with the progress with the Growing Resilient event that we brought, it was really truly born here. My comment to start off is, most people know about the American Red Cross as far as disasters and what we do in times of response. The reality is, we shifted our vision. Our vision is all about prevention and preparedness before those disasters strikes. We know that for every dollar we spend in preparedness, which is donor dollars, because we're chartered to do what we do by Congress, yet we use donor dollars in a very fiscally responsible way to focus on preparedness, will save us $4 in times of response. So that's the change in our mission, is to focus on prevention as a framework for preparedness. So, where did this come from? Well, most people know that we respond to things like Canton, and we respond to things like Westin Springs, but the reality is, 65,000 of our 70,000 calls nationally are related to single-family home fires and two-family home fires, those silent disasters that when we're all sleeping on our pillows, drooling at 3:00 in the morning, our volunteers are out responding to service a family that's lost a home in a house fire. We also know that those house fires are 75% preventable. We also know that 62% of the population that do not have a working smoke alarm is a direct result of their fatality. So when we came into Sioux Falls, we had done one of these canvassing projects in Iowa, where I came from, from the Red Cross, where three children and a 22-year-old mom lost their lives, in a 1,200-square-foot home in Lake City, Iowa, that had no working smoke alarms. We canvassed that community, six weeks later, and installed 450 smoke alarms in 650 households. I sit on a National Steering Committee, where we've researched and done our homework, that right now in our nation, we need 100 million smoke alarms. One in three people don't have the protection they need. We've got an issue this past year, and I'm sure Dean will mention it, 15% increase in fire fatalities in our nation. We have to do something to stop it. And I believe, with the collaboration that we've talked about, with the players at the table, it's about building a resilient community, and I'm gonna give full credit to our city EM, Regan Smith, who came up with the concept of the name. And resilience is a big term in FEMA, in all the disaster work we do. And I'm just gonna say this to you, resilience is built by strengthening a community's physical, psychological, social, and economic capacity. And we're trying to bring that new approach to everybody, being proactive. So this year, as we mentioned, we're broadening this out, and I can proudly say that here in Sioux Falls, we are the caveat for a national campaign across our nation. Where on October 11th, there'll be over 218 communities across our nation. I had the privilege of sitting on a national committee to focus on this issue, and that in this year alone, we're gonna be targeting 500,000 smoke alarm installs across our nation. In the next five years, a historic comment by the Red Cross, this is our mission, the next five years, we target to eliminate 25% of home fire fatalities and injuries in the next five years. In the history of the organization, we've never done that before. It is about building resilient communities, it's not about Red Cross, it's about how we can all come together as community folks to do this. Another piece of resilience is our health. We know that obesity is a problem in our nation, we know that cardiac disease is an issue in our nation. How do we be more proactive? And I'm very pleased to have two great peers with me today to focus on that kinda stuff and bring the partnerships together. So that is a part of our five-year plan as well. How do we focus on cardiac issues? How do we focus on drowning? How do we focus on several of our high-priority things in our nation that make sense to bring conveners together to grow resilient communities? So, Dean? Mary? I know sometimes the question is, "Does it do any good? As Fire Marshal, do I see any difference whatsoever in how we started versus how we finished?" I would tell you this, simply in the 1,800 homes that we canvassed last year, we found 32 homes that didn't have a single working smoke alarm inside of them. We had the opportunity to work with kids and talk to them about how to check the smoke alarm themselves. I know many people are a little bit off-put by the idea of pushing the test alarm on a smoke alarm, but we try to diminish that apprehension on the kid's part. So I can tell you right up front, the impact that we're seeing, while I'm not ready to spike the football and say it's a touchdown right now, we need just a little bit more time to do some analysis on Whittier Neighborhood, so that we can come back and tell you, these are the changes that we see block by block and neighborhood by neighborhood. This opportunity is for you to ask any questions that you have. We have the folks from Public Health here that can do a much better job in telling you about the resilient program in regards to our health program. So thank you for your time, if you have any questions.
Counselor Staggers.
Yes. You're talking about smoke alarms, but does that also include detection for carbon monoxide?
You know, we haven't discussed that much. The fire code in relationship to carbon monoxide detectors really does have to do with proximity to gas-fired appliances. So, since I can't go into everybody's home and say for sure, for certain, that every house is using a gas-fired furnace or gas-fired appliances to either heat or run a stove inside the home, then that has not been a focal point yet, but it is something that I'm interested in. We do track numbers for carbon monoxide poisoning as well, so it's something that we are interested in long-term, but for right now, our focus has been specifically on smoke alarms and installing those, and then the health issue.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Anderson Jr.
Dean, in your going over 1,800 homes, you said you, last year, you found 32 homes that didn't have working smoke alarms. How many of these smoke alarms do you pass out each year?
We pass out, the numbers have gone incrementally up. We've started out in the lower hundreds. It started going up higher. Three years ago, it was at 2,500. Last year was right around 3,000. That was including not only the smoke alarms that we did in Whittier Neighborhood, but all the installations that we did year-round. We do offer to citizens who are homeowners to come out and assist them, and this is especially helpful for our demographics who are elderly, who can't get up on a step ladder to check a smoke alarm. So those kinda services, we find where we're going in, checking to make sure they're work, often, we're replacing them because they're in excess of 10 years old. So that number has ballooned over time. It's up to about 3,000 now, but as we focus on areas of the city, I expect it to kind of norm out.
And, if I may? And what does this cost for like the smoke detectors, having our firemen out there, things like that?
That's a great question. You know, the thing that we're installing, as far as the homes, the type of detectors that we'll be installing, are 10-year lithium-ion smoke alarms. They are a piece of technology that just five years ago weren't really available on the market. If you walked into the local hardware store and tried to pick up a 10-year lithium-ion smoke alarm, it would be in excess of $30 to $40. Fortunately, we've also had some companies who've decided they don't necessarily wanna sell their product to us at that price range, and they've cut that almost to a quarter of that price. So right now, we're averaging $11 per smoke alarm. If we took the cost of putting batteries in smoke alarms over 10 years, your cost would be more than if we just installed one single lithium-ion smoke alarm. So, over the years, the costs have increased, we have decided to go to this 10-year alarm, but it's at a price point that just economically makes sense.
If I can make a comment on this program, I'll just say that, you know, the city spends a lot of money on... a lot of money on a lot of different things, large and small, but this is something that directly impacts people. And if it saves one life, it's worth it. Thank you for doing this.
Counselor Urban Buck.
Thanks. I would echo what Counselor Anderson said as well, that this program is pretty amazing for a community of our size to be doing this. You talk about, for me, Dean, would you talk about how we're going to measure that? I know you said you're not ready to measure, but how are we going to do that? Do we have to wait for a fire and then go, oh, there's one of our smoke detectors and they all got out? Or how are we going to figure this out? How's this a success?
We've been tracking responses throughout the city of Sioux Falls since 2005. We track every single response, whether we go for an EMS call or emergency medical services call, or whether we go for a fire response, or just a smoke scare type of call. The reason why I'm not ready to say that we're there yet is because those norms need to work their ways out, and we can also focus in block by block. So if you were to look at the city, the way the Sioux Falls Fire Rescue kind of divides up the city, every city square block is identified by a response area. And we can drill down to that specific neighborhood and tell you what's happened over the last 10 years, and then we start projecting out. It's almost the same way in which we're explaining how we're forecasting for news stations. So we can tell you almost block by block as we move out, where the responses are at, what's the concentration of them, and that's how we're making that analysis.
Great. Thank you.
Counselor Kylie.
Of the 1,800 homes, 32 had zero smoke alarms. How many smoke alarms did you actually install?
We installed just under 150 smoke alarms. We also installed about 120 batteries in some of the existing smoke alarms that were still functioning, that were not at the end of their lifespan. So that was the whole encompassing. Of the 1,800 homes, I think we actually opened doors at 300 homes? Yeah, 400 homes. So about a quarter of the homes. I can tell you what we did ahead of time. A lot of this was as a result of the planning that was done with the school district and Living Well and the Public Health Department in getting the word out way ahead of time. We didn't wait until the weekend of the event. We had public service announcements going out, radio conversations, and we really concentrated our efforts on making sure each of the residents in that neighborhood knew that we were coming that weekend. So I think that was the kind of helping issue in getting doors open and then being able to hit that many homes.
And your goal was to bring each home that you did gain access to up to code? In other words, a smoke alarm in every bedroom and hallway outside of bedroom areas and so forth?
Correct. Every home got an informational package, so there were 18, 100 of those that went out. But then on the doors that were open to us, those are the opportunities that we use to go into the home, talk about safety, do the blood pressure checks, talk to them about health issues, and then talk to families and children about having escape plans and the importance of smoke alarms.
Great approach. I mean, doing the educational portion of it before actually conducting your inspections and gaining access, just great approach. And again, as Counselor Anderson said, we saved one life. This is well worth it.
Counselor Staggers.
Yes. When should a homeowner replace a smoke alarm? In other words, when do they wear out?
Actually, Counselor, each year I get to talk to a whole bunch of fifth graders. So I use their birthday as a means of determining when it's time to replace their smoke alarm. So 10 years is the max. Every fifth grader is at least 10, 11 years old. We tell each one of them, it's easy to pull the smoke alarm down and look at the back of it. It'll tell you when it was manufactured. And after 10 years, the technology that's inside of the smoke alarm just doesn't serve its purpose. Most times, it becomes a nuisance at about eight or nine years, so you'll want to take it down at 10 years to get it down.
Thanks a lot.
Great advice. Thank you, Marshal Lanier. Appreciate your attendance today. Appreciate what you do. Today's last presentation is going to be by Matt Nelson, a report on the Walker Parking Study update and recommendations.
Yes. I apologize, you get me instead. Darren Smith, Director of Community Development. Thank you, Counselor Kylie. I was hoping somebody would laugh. Well, we are the last presentation. We are mindful you have a meeting tonight, so we've committed to, you're actually going to hear from Phil Barron, our consultant with Walker Parking. We've asked him to go through the slides in about 15 minutes. I'll follow him in just a few minutes, very briefly, on what we anticipate next steps to be in the process, and then we'll open it up for Q and A. We'll stay here as long as you want. So, long story short, I think some of you who have been on the council a while or have followed, certainly been a part of the last budget process and capital plan and approving that, you've seen in the budget and the capital plan for the city for a number of years now, a new parking ramp project and a significant one, you know, in the neighborhood of a $10 million project, give or take. The reason it kept getting moved out is, the truth is, our parking system is an enterprise fund. It is totally self-supported. It functions like a small business tucked inside city government. It gets zero general taxpayer or general fund support. So we don't just pick a year and say we're building a new parking structure, especially a $10 million structure, no matter what. It's all really based on supply and demand. That's really what it's based on. And so over time, it's been kept in the plan because I think a lot of us have thought there will be a need as downtown continues to develop, the system fills up, and we get closer to running out of capacity. But we're not going to build until we know we can afford it, because a $10 million ramp is a significant debt service payment annually on the system. We have a very healthy system financially. We want to keep it that way. But I will tell you, the reason we're here today and the reason we've retained Walker recently to do a study for us is because what we've seen over the last 27 months, and it's since the river ramp was removed, the system has gone from about 2/3 full to 83% full today. We think by the end of the year and a couple more months, three more months, we'll probably end the year around 85% full. If we could keep on that trajectory, that's a very nice trend, to fill up the system and to fill it up incrementally. We can manage that. But we asked Walker to come in. We have a longstanding relationship with them. They're very familiar with the system. They've done this type of study before for the city. We've asked them to come in and look at the current demand, the trends, and also a report recently by a group called PUMA, Progressive Urban Management Associates, who did a study for the 2025 Downtown Plan, which we're also moving through now, because they helped us understand where they believe development will occur and what type of development will occur in those areas in downtown. Because by and large, development drives parking, and certain types of development drive parking, commercial, office space, much more so than residential, for example, traditionally. So we asked them to come in and essentially confirm, you know, what we're seeing with the system filling up, what we feel, we see every day in the Economic Development Office and our conversations with local developers, projects to come, ask them to look at that and tell us, give us their professional opinion, is it time to begin moving forward? So that's what you're going to hear today, and then I'll come back up and talk about anticipated next steps. And just please understand that initiating the process, we're talking about what is likely a two- to three-year process, start to finish, to achieve a mixed-use development that includes, hopefully, private development combined with a public parking ramp or something along those lines, start to finish, doors open. You're probably looking at two years on the short end, very aggressive, probably too aggressive, to three years, and something in between is more likely if everything goes well. So it is time to initiate that process, but we'll talk about that in a moment. So Phil Barron with Walker will come up now and go through the slides.
Thank you very much. Once again, my name is Phil Barron. I'm with Walker. And thank you, Darren, for giving my presentation. He shared on many of the salient points that I'm going to touch on too, so forgive me if there's any redundancy, but I'm going to go through some of the analytics, our methodology. You know, what was our charge in doing this study? What were we trying to identify so that the parking department could, you know, have a decision point? Do we pursue some changes, some expansion to the system, or do we hold steady? Those are some of the decision point information items that we wanted to provide to them. Okay, just starting off, you know, the objective of this study, it's really important that we are on the same page, and so I want to make sure I'm clear here. We wanted to provide future development options that help the parking division improve public access and support economic development. Parking in many communities can be difficult to justify because you're ahead of the demand. You build sometimes before the demand is there. You build on the hopes that that'll entice developers to come downtown because there'll be an easier entry. The barrier of entry sometimes becomes difficult when a tenant wants to move downtown and can't find enough dedicated supply for their employees. So it often becomes an economic decision, and by the very nature, governments don't want to take risks. But, and there are a lot of white elephant garages in communities all over the U.S. where they built and the demand never came. And hence, enterprise funds were developed and parking became a natural fit for an enterprise fund, where they have to maintain by charter, by definition, financial solvency. They can't, as an enterprise fund, rely on the general fund to cover any shortfall. So they operate in a cost recovery mode, and it makes them think very carefully, do we take on this debt? Do we take on this project? Is the demand there? Are our prices correct? Are we managing our resources, public resources, to the best of our ability? So having said that, you know, we approached this project first by looking at the market conditions in downtown, just getting a snapshot, what is happening now? Then we looked at the PUMA report, as Darren mentioned, as a tool to direct us on how to project future demand. And that report addressed some macro opportunities. And so what we, and I'll explain that to you a little bit here, what we did is, we looked at office, potential office, square footage that would come downtown, and potential commercial space. And if that came to fruition, what would happen to the demand? How would that impact the system? And then we looked at sites, different sites downtown that could meet the need for a mixed-use parking facility, meaning they had the dimensions, it was in proximity to where demand is thought to be going. And we looked at three suitable sites. We looked at several other sites as well, and just through our professional judgment and looking at traffic and looking at other factors that impact parking, we narrowed it down to three suitable sites for consideration. We looked at 46 blocks, and the study area encompasses the geographic area on the north. You know, you have Falls Park. On the south, 14th Street, Minnesota, over to 5th. And it's important that we wanted to keep an area of focus that included east, the East Bank, even though right now the rail is operating, you know, we know that's going to change. And we know over the last several years, the face of that area has changed. And we also know that that core CBD has seen tenants come and go. And so this area generally reflects where the attractions are and where people tend to, you know, locate parking. The area was divided into eight subareas in order to look at localized parking challenges, because we know that just looking at the area as a whole, there's different characteristics. Within the eight subareas, downtown, there are 11,429 spaces, and the public operates about 39% of that, where the private has 61%. So in many cities, it's perceived that the public parking is a monopoly and has control over parking assets. But the reality is municipal parking systems typically don't own lion's share of supply, and this is the case here as well. We looked at occupancy at three key times, 10:00 AM, 1:00 PM, and 7:00 PM. And this heat map that you're looking at, in red, it's areas that are 80% or greater occupancy. And in the parking industry, when a facility is 80 to 90% full, the average user perceives that to be, you know, full. You have those last few spaces available, maybe in the furthest points within the parking lot. So those are identified as red. Yellow means, you know, there's intensity there, but it isn't full. It's less than, you know, it's 50 to 79%, and then green is less than 50% essentially. So as you can see, the 10:00 AM hour, that core area is starting to fill up. At 1:00 PM, you see where the core demand is occurring. And at 7:00, we see a drop-off. Now, that doesn't mean that on Phillips Avenue, the on-street aren't fully consumed in the evening, because that's typically the case. But what we're seeing here is on the block in general, there's available supply. And many times, people go to the, you know, most convenient space, which is on-street, but around the block, there may be, you know, 100 spaces available off-street. And this current conditions map is important because it gives us indication of where demand may be going in the future and how the intense areas may feel a greater strain if more land uses are added to downtown or more demand generators. So just summing up current conditions, you know, the public system during peak, it was identified that there's 84% occupancy in the facilities, on-street and off, or I'm sorry, off-street. On-street naturally is less utilized because it's primarily used by visitors and short-term patrons and not employees, and that is 43% occupied. And that doesn't deviate from what we see in other communities. On-street is typically less utilized than off-street. As Darren mentioned, the trend that the statistics show is that over the last 27 months, there has been an escalation in occupancy. And if that trend increases, you know, the current trend indicates that 90% of capacity by 2015 is plausible. The private sector, you know, they're 76% utilized, and that's normal for them to be a little less utilized than the public, because they segregate their parking and they protect it for their tenants. And so sometimes when, you know, a facility isn't fully utilized or an office building, they still guard that supply. It's restricted for a specific user group. So it's normal to see a lower utilization rate. And then overall, for the downtown area, that 46-block area, we're looking at 74% occupancy. And just, what does that mean? You know, there are close to 3,000 unoccupied spaces. And I only bring that up because many times, people want to know, how do we better utilize or how do we partner better with the public-private use of parking? And when we look at that number, and if we put a dollar sign to it, on what it would cost to rebuild those unoccupied spaces into a structure, if you took 3,000 and you multiplied it by 1,500 a space, that's a lot of money. And that often gets communities to think, okay, how can we partner with the private sector to share parking? You know, to open up that supply that maybe is restricted for a specific user group to the general public to increase access to downtown. So that's just a soundbite, a piece of information that is helpful when thinking about options in the future. The future projections are based on PUMA's projections of what the downtown could reasonably expect over the next 20 years. And we use the most conservative projections that they had, the low end, and it's 190 square feet of commercial and a million square feet of office over the next 20 years. That results in a projected deficit of 2,100 parking spaces, assuming the city would provide parking needs for that, you know, commercial and office space. And specifically, the need would be for employee parking, long-term parking. So as I mentioned earlier, there's opportunity to utilize the on-street better, but that's not what it's designed for. It's not designed for employees. So our recommendation is that, you know, the parking division consider, you know, building structured parking over the next two to five years to accommodate the growth, not only what's experiencing, what they're experiencing today and the trend that they're seeing, but also to accommodate seeing, but also to accommodate future growth as identified by Puma's report. Now, we looked at three potential sites. We just, Site A, B, and C, First Avenue Lot, which is owned by the city. It's currently operated as a pay lot. Then we had Site B, the Sixth and Phillips Avenue, and that's a privately-held lot, but it's located within that core area where I mentioned, and I was at the exhibit, demonstrated there's high occupancy. And then the third is Site C, Eighth and Main. And that site is currently used for employee parking with a one-level-supported parking facility and a surface lot. The circles around those sites represent an 800-foot radius, and really, that represents the draw or the impact in most communities for where people will park and walk to. And Sioux Falls, with the weather and, you know, there's demand patterns based on seasonality, but we believe that 800-foot radius is really the impact zone for any future development. We then looked at the sites and broke them down, you know, tried to compare them apples-to-apples, and we looked at the cost per space on a parcel with a target capacity of 500 spaces. If you, that, that number was decided, even though there's a need for 2,100 based on full projections coming to fruition, we looked at 500 because it's, it's a reasonable amount when you're looking to develop a facility. It's, it's an amount that, a supply that allows for efficiencies. If you build smaller, the cost per space can go up significantly. So we, for planning purposes, we started with a target capacity of 500. We know within the system that if a 500-space facility were opened up today, about 350 of those spaces could be leased out. And, you know, when we look at A, B, and C options, the cost per space is the lowest at Site A, which is owned by the city right now. We also looked at the cost per net space gained, and that's based on the spaces that would be displaced or taken offline. And, and in that case, once again, the cost per space for A is the least. And I'm, we're sharing this information with the understanding that all three sites are suitable, and it provides the division an opportunity to look at these sites and, and examine, you know, these opportunities. We, we believe all of them, you know, could serve the downtown well. They're, they're located within, you know, a couple of blocks of each other. In a size, a town size of Sioux Falls, you know, an addition of supply this size could really have an impact on the shifts of parking and open up areas that currently are heavily utilized. And so from an apples-to-apples comparison, this is the information that we've provided to the division. And in conclusion, I mentioned these already, but I'll just reiterate, you know, two to five years really is a window that we recommend the division consider pursuing, adding supply to the downtown. The future deficit, if the Puma projections come to fruition, are approximately 2,100 spaces. A reasonable target net gain in supply in the near term is, you know, 500 spaces, and a project cost could range anywhere from, you know, 9.8 to 11.6 million. And what we agree with the division when we're talking through these options is that a mixed-use facility is the, the most appropriate way to go in looking for partnerships. Most communities don't want a utilitarian structure, you know, a 50, 60, 70-year decision in downtown to be an eyesore. And so they're thinking carefully about how do we build an amenity in downtown, not create a heat, an island, a parking island, or a dead zone, but have grade-level retail, strong connectivity, pedestrian connectors, and make the parking an asset. And, and one, one point, and this is my final point, is that the division has taken the liberty to pursue some best practices and market their parking assets. Many communities don't do that, and they've looked at ways to maximize their resources by distributing demand to lower, lower utilized areas. And we strongly stress that they continue to do that because parking is costly, and the number-one step should be, how do we maximize what we already have before we build? And, and they're doing that now, and we stress that they, you know, whether they build or not, they continue to do that. That is it for me. So questions, I'd be glad to answer.
The first current condition slide with the, with the red, yellow, and green, I noticed that the observation period was a Wednesday. Any, can you make an educated guess on what that would be like on a, on a weekend, in particular, a weekend evening?
Correct. You would see on-street parking heavily utilized if it was a special event, which we don't measure anomalies situations. We look for the most, you know, mid-day, typical day, yeah. What would be, so it wouldn't be planning for that peak of all peaks. But on a, on a Friday evening, when there's, you know, an art walk or something of that nature, concerts going on, people typically go for the on-street. Parking is the most convenient. And then surface lots and then structures, if they're unfamiliar with the downtown area. We wouldn't see as many employee parking, employees parking downtown. So then the total demand would be less, but you'd see a higher intensity on-street or in clustered areas, closest to wherever the event is taking place, which people form perceptions based on what they experience. So someone who doesn't come downtown frequently or comes down only for those events on Friday or Saturday, and they want on-street parking and see that it is maybe unavailable, the perception is there isn't supply when maybe just around the block, there's a half-full parking ramp. So it's a trickle, it's a tricky planning process where, do we manage a solution or do we build our way out of a challenge? You know, or do we manage people more effectively through communicating options, possibly price management, or, which I know it's free on weekends and evenings, but how do we communicate these options? And I think through the marketing program, we're seeing that people are trying to, or that the division's trying to communicate, you know, it's so easy, there's options. So education is, is critical to meeting those weekend activities.
Thank you.
Taking a look at this study and your maps and everything, it appears the selection of your three locations are all on the west side of the river in the main area of downtown. During my time on the console, I can't really think of anything brand-new that's been built. And, you know, we've had the remodeling of buildings and that in that area, but nothing new. Did we take into consideration the potential access of the railroad relocation property and the need for parking on the east side of the river also? Right now, it's growing, and there are problems over there.
Correct. Yeah, we did look at that, and we talked about, and once again, as I mentioned earlier, you know, projecting the future, what may go on the rail yard property, what mixed-use development. And I know there's been plans done and back, dating back to 2007 and probably before that, what could potentially go on that East Bank side. When we were looking at that and the knowledge that we had of the parcel coming available is that, you know, surface parking could be a temporary use in that area to stimulate growth, to provide that supply that's needed. You know, many of the, the properties there have parking, that are building it into their development program. But we looked on that, that east side as, as, you know, it's, it's a little bit more speculative. Could that facility, could a facility on that side, some of the questions we asked as a, as a develop, as a team, project team, could a parking ramp on that side help alleviate or some of the strain that's being felt right now on the parking system? Would people be able, you know, be willing to walk that distance and if they're working on the other side of the river? How, how long, what's the timeline before the development on the east side matures enough that a facility over there would be financially solvent? Or would it be, you know, for, there's another community I worked in recently where they have a facility that they built, and the demand didn't come. So now they have a large facility that, it's a great opportunity, but the economy in that local community isn't, isn't moving fast enough to fill it. And it's, it's a huge cost center for the enterprise, and it's a big strain on it. So we, we were just thinking, you know, brainstorming about how would it fit into the context of the existing system, the existing demand patterns? And building on that side would be building ahead of the market, maybe a little bit further than building on, on the west side, where we know that there's some pent-up demand.
Thank you.
Can you give us a visual on what a 500-spot parking ramp might look like? Compare it to what we have, maybe the one where, I don't know the names of them, sorry, the one that's by the bus stop. How many does that have? Do we, can we make some comparisons?
Yeah, First Avenue, 600 spaces there, yeah. You know, and, and up on the screen right now, you can see, you know, if you're going four levels up, the massing, those are just examples of massing, what it could look like. The facades are done in a way to make it look like it isn't parking. You know, there's always the concern that the top levels won't be used, that the circulation, you know, how many spaces are we building unnecessarily? When you're, when you're building to accommodate for employee parking, the patrons are frequent. They get, they get a sense of the facility, they're used to the rotations. Where we see a lower level of service being delivered in the parking industry is to, with it, when you have a parking ramp and you're, you're providing it for visitors to downtown who are infrequent, you know, they, they show up, or they drive a couple revolutions and they're, they don't remember where they park, what floor. It isn't the best. That's why visitors typically park on-street. A facility, 500 spaces, would Monday through Friday be used primarily by employees? So, you know, we, we take that into consideration too. We usually, if a facility was going to be, say, if we were recommending 1,200 spaces, we would need a larger footprint. We wouldn't want to go up as, we'd want flat floors, we wouldn't want to go up as high. And in most communities, they don't want to consolidate the supply in, in an area. They want to spread it out. And so, you know, 500 was, was a number that we, we identified based on design efficiencies, understanding the financial position of the enterprise, and then, you know, understanding in context, the Puma projections are over 20 years. And so that can happen in 20 years. So you wouldn't want to build to accommodate that projection if it wasn't financially justifiable at this point in time, which right now it isn't, so.
Thank you.
Yes, on your site locations, A, B, and C, you have down from B and C, it's going to be land acquisition costs and demolition costs. Is that factored in to the
No.
Cost per, it's not?
No.
So actually, 19,551 for Site B is going to be much more.
Correct, correct. I mean, we didn't set, you know, putting that into a document, we weren't sure what the market value would be.
Mm-hmm, sure.
Or, I mean, it could, it could hinge on negotiations forthcoming that we don't have knowledge of. So we just wanted to state that, yes, that would be an additional consideration.
It's going to be additional, mm-hmm.
Okay. Yeah.
Thank you. Looking at the pictures that are here, and the ones that we had at the end there, the facades that are on the front, have we given, or are we going to give any consideration to partnering with a developer to do a, you know, a bottom level of retail mixed-use and then parking above it? And secondly, as we do this, are we going to also plan to go up from there so that if we have a good location, we can add a floor or two or three to it?
Yes, great question, thank you. And that's a nice segue to what I want to make sure you all understood is what we see as, as likely next steps would be sometime in the next 30 days or so, we would like to initiate or launch a process that, that really puts out a call for proposals, some kind of competitive process, very much similar in some respects, very different in others than what we do on a regular basis with our economic development work. We'd be putting out a call or a call for proposals, private proposals, to come forward and do something in tandem with what would likely be a public parking ramp. And, you know, we're going to see what that brings forward. But it answers a few of the questions that have been talked about here. We are open to anything as long as, again, it's, you know, what makes the most sense from a public parking perspective, supporting downtown, what those numbers look like. Counselor Staggers asked, a very good question on, hey, what does the answer yes mean on land acquisition, demolition costs, and those things? Well, we don't know that, but we do know that those things will have to occur. Now, who pays and how much? We don't know because we're going to undertake a process really unlike any that we've, we've undertaken, I think in our city's history, looking for this public-private partnership with a parking ramp. And it's exciting, it's also stressful because there's a lot of things that have to get factored into that with how you do something like that. Because it could be one partner, one private partner, it could be multiple partners, it could be residential, or even a hotel, or both, plus something else. And that is something our system really historically has not been set up to provide parking for. It's mostly been based on a Monday-through-Friday, eight-to-five system to support that, so.
I'm going to take a shot, then I'll go over to you guys if you don't mind. I'd like to ask. Like Counselor Anderson, I looked at this and thought about the East Bank and the railroad relocation, and, and you mentioned now 30 days. Why, I mean, we're, from what it sounds like, we're close to getting final, some resolution on the railroad relocation. Why wouldn't we want to take a harder look at including that?
Yeah, great question. Well, here's what I have to, I want to really stress, is the three sites shown, we asked them to come in and confirm demand and trends and so forth, and then help us with what they felt were the most suitable sites, most suitable, not the only sites, the most suitable sites, and what the costs and the challenges would be associated with each. Now, that's based on not only what we know today, what we're feeling, but also, you know, what some of that, the development demand study told us as well. But again, I think it goes back to the type of process we're going to undertake. So we may launch that in the next 30 days, but there would be a several-month period, maybe stretching all the way through winter even to next spring, to invite proposals. We are open, and we will make it clear, we are open to proposals coming forward that proposes to put a ramp anywhere downtown. Now, of course, we'll attach the study, so the folks considering that and making any proposals, you know, they need to see where our demand is and where we anticipate it continuing. I would take it a step further and say, one of the three sites down at Sixth and Phillips is the Raven Corner. You know, the lack of demand at this moment down there, because Raven and Shrop and others are taking care of their own needs at the moment, the lack of demand combined with what, you know, we're going to find will be needed in the rail yard area in the next few years is a site that personally I'd put on the back burner. It's not one that I would feel like, feel comfortable making this kind of investment in until we know further what might happen there. I think it's also very likely that we're going to have a need, likely on the West Bank, which Phil has, has identified, certainly what we feel and see every day in the system, it's real, based on demand. And then I think there is going to be a need for parking in that rail yard area. We just don't know yet, will that be private, taken care of privately? Will it be a public parking or public structure? So I don't think we're looking at an or, it could be an and/or possibly.
Okay, and along that same line, then, you talk about Raven, I think of the downtown Sioux Falls group, we have other, have other large employers. How much did we include them in this process?
Yeah, well, I know, we are in contact with them on a somewhat regular basis. We had quite a bit of contact with the Puma study in particular. And again, what we asked Walker, some economies of scale and not duplicating or reinventing the wheel, we did ask them to rely heavily on the Puma study, and Puma did a great deal of outreach, going to those businesses and inviting them down to the city to have meetings, to talk to them about their future needs, development, parking, and to them about their future needs, development, parking, and so forth.
Okay, and that's all I've got. Counselor Upenbach?
Keeping, keep the conversation along, that idea of the private ramps. Do you know offhand, Darren, how many private ramps are within that study area that's in the map?
How many private ramps? Well, there's, let's see, the Hilton Garden, well, the CNA Hilton Garden Inn ramp, the Wells Fargo ramp, which was identified as one of the most suitable sites. I think US Bank has a structure. Matt, are there any, those are the private ramps.
That's the very large structures that are, like, we're looking at 500 spaces, it's typically just that building and sometimes not.
So, then, continue, continue that thought process then, Matt. Do we have any idea what kind of growth projections might be in those private ramps as well as our own? I mean, are there?
What do you mean as far as growth?
Do we know? I mean, we can kind of identify, in our minds, we kind of know where the private ramps are. Do we know any of those are going to grow, or they're not going to grow? Do we know either way?
No, I do not see any of those being expanded higher. I can tell you, most of them are either a one-level facility, and they're precast, they probably weren't designed to expand, or they're incorporated where they've got office space above them. So, I would say it'd be very limited, if any, at this point.
Okay, good, thank you.
Counselor Staggers?
Yeah, Darren, how much did this study cost?
I believe it was approximately $30,000. Phil, do you remember, Matt? Yeah, $29,000, $30,000.
Will we be using Walker anymore, or is this just the beginning of using Walker?
Well, I'm sure Phil would like to come up and answer that, but we, well, let me start by saying, again, we have an ongoing relationship with Walker. They do all of our inspections in our ramps, they help us put together the plans for maintaining and improving those ramps. That's very important. When we've had analysis done historically, and again, now, we use them, now, what role they could potentially play in the process going forward and a new ramp? You know, again, I think there's a strong possibility Walker plays a role, we just don't know how that's all going to unfold yet.
Thank you.
Yep.
Counselor Erickson?
Just one question, question in regarding to funding the parking ramp. Is the goal to, I know it's an enterprise fund, so is it going to be bonded? Is there other avenues that have been discussed, or is that?
Yeah. Well, we will be exploring all of those. I mean, certainly, we've had some of those conversations, or, you know, the what-ifs and what might be possible. But I think what we're really learning more and more as we go through this process and we have outreach with businesses and others downtown, is that about the time we think we have a pretty good idea of, you know, all possibilities, we've, somebody comes forward and says, well, we might consider this, or we might have this need in one or two years. So, the truth is, what we're learning is, this process we're about to undertake really needs to be broad and invite all proposals, and then we'll, of course, have to determine which one makes the most sense, if that helps.
Counselor Garley?
Just a quick question, and it goes back to the east bank versus west bank. I mean, we have a immediate need on the west bank, or at least a projected immediate need.
Correct.
So, regardless of what happens over on the east bank, I would suspect that that need isn't going to go away.
Correct.
And so, it may be necessary at some point in time to look yet for an additional ramp too.
Absolutely.
Over on the east side.
Yeah, that'd be a great problem to have, and we hope so. And again, as we go through the process, you know, with not only this, but also the rail yard, we think we're going to find that out. One thing I should, I want to make sure I mentioned, because I wanted to and I forgot, and Counselor Staggers reminded me, we likely, if everything happens the way it should, there should be an item on the consent agenda coming up. We would like to put Tegra Consulting under contract. We are working through that with them right now. It would be about a six-month contract, approximately $25,000 to help us structure the process, advise us, coach us through this process. It is going to be one of the more complicated ones we've undertaken, and the truth is, they have, they have staff that have a great deal of experience in putting together real estate deals that involve public-private partnerships, including very specifically, public ramps with private development. You all will recognize the name Tegra probably, because they were the owner's rep on the event center. They have been hired as the owner's rep, I believe, on the indoor aquatic center. So, it's the same firm, but actually different, a different partner in that firm and different staff, different expertise that we would like to have help us. All parking funds.
Thank you very much, Darren. I guess, the last thing I have, Phil, tell us that you didn't hurt your hand conducting this survey.
Pardon, once again?
Didn't, you didn't hurt your hand conducting this survey, did you?
No, this was something I should have outsourced a to-do list item at home. My wife said, I should have hired somebody to do, so, just moved into a soft cast, so, I'm doing all right.
Sounds great.
A little humbled.
No other questions from the council regarding the parking study? I believe we're done with our agenda, meeting adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen.